I'm looking for Pastor William Parsons from Redeemer Lutheran Church if he's here. And he is here. Let's get the latest in the invocation and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Glad you could be here.
Good, good. I am here. I was watching through the, in the back. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as fairhope's citizens, we intercede with thee for our city. Bless our mayor, council, and all who serve this community with honesty, dedication, and wisdom. Grant our public servants to be ever mindful of the welfare of all their constituents. Grant that they may be guided to serve unselflessly, the common good. Preserve them from all temptations of dishonesty, pettiness, or self-seeking. Protect the city and our liberties, which are the cornerstone of good government. Teach us to serve our fellow citizens, and may we ever seek the best for Fairhope. And wisely use our privileges of ballot, free press, and speech for the improvement of our community and nation. These blessings grant us, dear Lord, for Jesus' sake, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Parsons. We appreciate it. Number one on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June 25, 2018, and to approve the minutes of the work session from the same meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, minutes are approved. Mayor, your report?
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I want to give a huge thank you to our fire department and other employees who all helped set up for the Fourth of July, and we really had an amazing year this year. In addition, I want to give a sincere thank you to the Baldwin Pops. The City of Fairhope is incredibly proud of our annual partnership with this organization of volunteer musicians committed to enhancing our cultural environment by providing free concerts to the public. I wanted to give just a quick financial snapshot of where we are right now as we start working on the 2019 budget. I wanted to highlight some numbers for everyone because it's kind of exciting. These are our numbers based, it's just three slides, but numbers based on end of fiscal year 2016, which is when we all entered office. So this is something we can all pat ourselves on the back because it's really some great accomplishments. Our cash accounts, which you'll see on this slide here, these accounts, and there's many, we're getting ready to consolidate them and go over how we're going to be consolidating them. But it's available cash, restricted cash, capital projects, and reserve, which also includes the $7 million rainy day. We have increased our cash account balances around 50 percent from $29.8 million to $44.4 million. And then on the next slide, and this, we'll be using these numbers to plug into the 2019 budget. And instead of using the word "reserve," which is how a lot of these accounts are categorized, Mike has reorganized all of these accounts, so they're not saying "reserve" anymore. It's basically showing what they're used for, and I think that was a source of confusion, especially for me. The debt, city debt, we have reduced city debt by 46 percent. And these, the debt should be paid off by 2020, our term. But we reduced debt from $6.83 million to $3.68 million. And then lastly, we've got the utility debt has been reduced 21 percent from 19.3 to 15.3 percent. And as a city, we are in a solid financial position with far less reliance on utilities as a city. Since 2016, we've reduced the utility subsidy to the city by approximately $4 million. The city is paying for its own operating expenses now, and the utility transfers have decreased substantially. Because our utilities are not transferring as much to the city to keep afloat, this money can be, can now go towards infrastructure without borrowing money. Therefore, I do not anticipate increasing our utility debt as we progress. The money that is, that we use to transfer to the city can now be looked at for planned infrastructure and community development. So that's it for the exciting news, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it. Before I open the floor to for public participation, guys, I want to bring something up. Lisa passed out, I think, a resolution. Now, this involves something we talked about at the last work session, and I think we talked about it outside of that as well with Richard Peterson. This is about negotiating to purchase, a purchase price for the land by the current substation over on Young and Nichols. And this would be something that we'd walk on the agenda if the motion was made to possibly vote on this tonight to authorize the mayor to negotiate a purchase price for that property. And so does anybody in favor, I guess, of adding this to tonight's agenda, amending the agenda to add this on?
I'd be okay adding that on. I make a motion, will you amend the agenda to add this item?
I got a second?
Second.
Okay, and you need to roll call this, Lisa, to, does it got to be unanimous? Okay, so all those in favor of adding this resolution to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, it's added on, it'll be item number 24. All right, with that said, I will open the floor for public participation for agenda items. So this will be agenda items five through now 24. So if you've got anything to say about any agenda items, you can now speak to those, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before we start that, can we also look at the agenda to take out seven, eight, nine, and 10?
I believe we can. For those of you that weren't here during the work session, there was some discussion about utility rates during the work session, and there were still some questions about how exactly that was going to affect everyone if, if that was decided to increase those rates. And so there was some suggestion at the, at the work session to table those items being agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10 until some more of our questions could be answered. And so, Mr. Boone, I think if you'd like, you could make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect, therefore, if anybody wants to talk about any of the agenda items other than those seven, eight, nine, and 10, it'd probably be a little helpful.
Well, I think, you're taking it off, you're just tabling it. Yeah, I think you'd be making a motion to table agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10.
That's, I mean, that's what I'm doing. If you table, you're taking off the agenda for tonight.
Well, that's right.
He's saying if they're here for that purpose.
Yeah, I guess if you're here for that, and we table that, this, if you're here to discuss seven, eight, nine, and 10, you could still talk about that right now if you'd like. Is anybody here to specifically talk about agenda items seven, eight, nine, or 10? Okay, all right, so Kevin, you have made a motion to table agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Correct.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of tabling agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? All right, motion passes. Agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10 are tabled. All right, public participation is still open for anybody who wants to comment on five, six, or 11 through 24. If there are no takers, I will close public participation and go to council comments. Council, McConyers.
Okay, just a few comments. First, I hope everybody had a safe Independence Day, a great fireworks show for Fairhope. Wanted to just comment on something the mayor you mentioned as we've tabled the adoption of the utility increases for now. The mayor mentioned we, we could, we could make the improvements necessary to the infrastructure without adding utility debt, and I think that's something I'd like to take a look at, whether or not we could add a little bit of utility debt and decrease the proposed rate increases so that we are in a good position. We have an opportunity to kind of weigh that over the next few weeks. Another thing I would like to bring up is, to my fellow councilmen, on Friday, Friday mornings before, before the council meeting, the mayor has a supervisor and director meeting. I know I mentioned it, I think, last meeting, but a lot of good information. If you can make it, I think two of us at a time could attend that meeting, so we could get with Gail and, and just RSVP if you're able to work that into your schedule. And lastly, my good friend and, and fellow councilman, Mr. Kevin Boone officially retired beginning of this month, so congratulations. I think he said he now has an extra 40 hours a week to dedicate to the City of Fairhope. We can all fight for that one other slot, Kevin will have all those other Fridays taken. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
No comment.
Mr. Boone?
Actually, I have no comment.
I, I want to reiterate what the mayor and Jimmy said about thanking our, our fire and police department for all they do to put on the Fourth of July celebration. It really is a special event for the city and our staff too, Paige. I know, I know how much work goes into that, so thank you all. It was, it was wonderful. And I see we've got some scouts in the audience. If you guys want to stand up, tell us where you're from. Tell us what troop you are.
We are Troop 174 out of Daphne, who is from the LDS church.
We hope to, to teach you something. Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate it. All right, we'll wrap up council comments and go into agenda item number five. Mr. Dice?
Thank you, Councilman. This is a, the second reading of a rezoning. It is case number is ZC 17.19, Camilla at the Colony. This property is located on Battles Road. It is 1.5 acres in size, and they are request, it's unzoned now. They're requesting a conditional annexation to come into the city. They're requesting the TR District. As you may recall from the first reading, this had an accompanying preliminary plat that was approved by the Planning Commission, conditioned upon its annexation to the city, so this is the, the last part of that process. The plat is in your, is in your booklet there. This is the property. It does abut TR District that's existing right now. This would not cause the TR District to go above its originally designed size, and it is below the threshold of units that the TR District was originally envisioned to have, so that's, it's all in line with that. This is the site. It's next to the golf course, and here is the plat. The, the lot sizes, the smallest lot is 7,169 square feet. The largest lot is 8,859 square feet. In the TR District, there are three categories. You have the high-rise district, the mid-rise, and low-rise. And that's how, how it was designed, I think, back in 2009 or 10. The high-rise district is the existing condominiums, and then the mid-rise is areas around the lake. And this area is comprised of the low-rise, which is 35-foot height limit, which is pretty much in line with the normal height limit that the city has. The design philosophy of its whole development, these are small lots. The, the smallest lot that's allowed in the TR District is 2,100 square feet, which is a very, very small lot. The, the original development and design philosophy was basically one where you would have fee simple title to a small piece of land, and then all around you would be common area. So the trade-off is small lots with a large amount of common area, and if you drive through the development today, you'll see that. That's kind of the design philosophy. A low-maintenance type of philosophy, but still having lots of green space and lots of areas in that TR District that are open and available for public, for people who live there to use. So that's why you see the small lots. At the first reading, there were some questions about the small lots, but just want to reiterate that, that that was part of the original design philosophy, and this fits into that category. There is also two of the phases that are under construction now that, that you can say, this is a typical house. And those phases, as you can see, they're, they're, they occupy a majority of the lot. The rear and front setbacks are five feet and zero on the side. So you see that, that these are small lots, and they do build out to the, to meet the parameters of the lot. But again, the design philosophy is sort of a low-maintenance philosophy, like you'd find. So be glad to answer any questions you may have. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning, conditional rezoning, and also they did approve the preliminary plat with the condition that this rezoning be granted. And again, this is also a conditional annexation.
Okay. I'll open it up for discussion. Councilman? You know, and I'll, I'll say this. I, I believe I was on planning and zoning when this got brought up the first time, and I didn't vote on it because I know I'd have to vote on it here. And if I remember right, there, there was at least some, some pushback and some, some pushback and some hesitation, I guess, from the surrounding neighborhood. But I don't see anybody here, so I don't know if their, their concerns have been alleviated or...
Right, and we haven't heard from many people on this particular one. It, it does abut the golf course. If you can see from the, the layout there, the site, it's pretty much surrounded by the golf course, and then adjacent across the street is a green buffer area around it, and those are, have a similar design philosophy as well. So I think these are all similar situated developments and how they are laid out and so forth. And so, you know, this is, in our opinion, this is compatible with that TR District. Again, this is abutting it, and so this would be an extension of the TR District. But again, the original intent of that district, it does not exceed the size, the total acreage, and also the total dwelling units. And so we, we have not had a whole lot of feedback on this particular application. It seems to be one that is, it seems to be acceptable to the, to the neighboring property owners. And so we do, again, recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Wayne. All right, if there's not any more discussion, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Just roll calls.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, agenda item number six is an ordinance to approve an application from Catherine Reynolds for a franchise agreement, for a franchise agreement to operate aquatics instruction, which include lifeguard and swim instruction at the Fairhope Municipal City Pool on 803 North Greeno Road. This was introduced at our last meeting.
Just here to answer any questions you might have about it, and yeah.
Appreciate it. Council, you have any questions about this particular issue? If you don't, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Clark, will you call and roll?
Yes, I will. Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, seven, eight, and nine, seven, eight, nine, and 10 have been removed or tabled from the agenda. So we will move to number 11. Number 11 is a resolution that the governing body of the City of Fairhope hereby rescinds resolution number 3101-18, rejects bid number 024-13 for fitness equipment for the Recreation Department, and authorizes to rebid. I don't think we need anybody to explain that. Anybody got any questions? Anybody want, any discussion on that? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number 12, resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of bid number 026-17, the installation of seasonal supplemental LED lighting with Winterland Inc. for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract with a total annual cost not to exceed $147,800. And I believe the mayor discussed this a little bit in the work session, but I'll open this up for discussion. Council?
I had a question or two for the mayor on, just some clarification on what you were saying. So we're, you would be transitioning to a type of light that would just stay up permanently rather than needing to be?
This company is the one that we contracted out to hang lights last year. And, but their business, they also are the manufacturer of lights for outside use. And one of the lights that they have, which will be, we've tested out, I think, I'm not sure if anybody's... We did test out one of these on one tree, I think, when we hung the, the previous lights. But as we transition to these lights that they manufacture, these lights can be left out for three years. And then there'll be some annual maintenance, but the overall cost will be a lot less. So that's what we would like to try to transition to. But we are going to use approximately half of the lights for the trees we already have lights for that were left over from the previous purchase.
Okay, so if we were to use them this year, not to exceed $147, then we would take down?
Half of them.
And then the next year?
We would try, we would do the other half for the ones that can be left out.
Which would be a lesser, a lesser price than this, right?
It would be about the same price, because this is including, I think, and I'm sure I'm getting this right, but it's including the labor and the lights.
And then for the next two years, we wouldn't have to do anything but a little bit of maintenance?
Right. So I mean, that, that's the whole thing, is we're trying to get, especially the smaller trees, where they wrap the branches, to leave those out for, they have a three-year warranty, so...
The only comment I had, and I, you know, I remember what a can of worms this was last year when we talked about it, so I hate to even get back into it. But last year, I think, we tried to award this bid to a local company, but that local company had an employee or, or partner maybe in that firm that had worked with the city sometime within the last two years. And so we were unable to award them that bid because of that particular issue. And I just wonder, you know, because I think our goal would always be to, you know, work with a local business when possible, is if that two years had expired, and if we could or should rebid this to give them the opportunity to come back in on this. But then again, I don't know, I mean, I think...
I'm not sure. I don't really remember the exact rules, but I do know that we are kind of pushing the time limit, because you have to... I'm not sure what kind of timeframe, maybe Julian can help us, but I mean, it would be... And the, and the main thing too with this bid, and you might know more about it, that would be great, is that since they're manufacturing the lights, that's part of this, right?
It's my understanding it's only for the installation, taking them down and putting them up. I was under the impression we had to do a bid for the lighting, for the lights.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
But yes, you are right. The last, last year, the low bidder had been an employee with the city, but I don't know what that, that time limit's been, how long he's been gone. But yeah.
You know, I mean, we could always, I mean, if we're having to do a separate bid for the lights, we could always buy the lights from this company.
Right, and I mean, thank God that you were here to clarify. But we, I do want to point out, and I think we had, I had more compliments on the lights last year than ever. I mean, this is what this company does for a living. They did this before they started producing lights, so this is what they do all over the country, is they decorate for Christmas. So I thought they did a very, very good job, and they're, this is what an extension of...
Yes, it's the first extension.
Is there a deadline for when we have to execute that?
I think it expires in September.
Okay, so we...
So we have a couple months.
What I'd like, at least the opportunity to do, looking at this, is I'd like to at least have the opportunity to look, to see if the company that actually was the low bidder last year, if that two years has expired, and so that we could at least have the opportunity to... You know, that might be really messing this whole process up, but because they were a local company that we tried to give the bid to last year as a low bidder, but we were unable to because of an ethical issue, or an ethical rule, I guess, not an issue. I'd love to have the opportunity to award this to a local company if we were able to do that.
Okay.
And, but at the same time, I really like the idea that the mayor's proposed of being able to buy lights that do not have to be replaced so that this yearly expense is not nearly what it is now. And so, I mean, council, if you guys are, are, find this acceptable, I would at least like to see this tabled maybe for one meeting, to at least have the opportunity to look into whether or not, whatever ethical rule, whatever timeframe, to see whether or not it's expired or not, to give one of these local companies the opportunity to bid on this contract, if, if they even wanted to do that, which they may or may not.
Okay.
So...
I'd like to make sure I got this straight. This $147.8 is strictly to put the lights, take the lights down and put them up, and then we'll buy?
We buy the lights in a series.
The lights, half and half? Half of regular lights, half these LEDs that can last two years, is that correct?
Well, we already have half, we already have enough lights, I think, to do half the trees.
Okay.
So what we purchased this year would just be half the lights, and they would be lights that you could leave up and just have maintenance on.
Now, with the warranty, and again, this may not be part of the discussion of this, but with the warranty on these lights, should they go out? Do we have to pay to have them taken on and taken off, and they replace the lights? Or how, how does that, do you know how that warrant, anybody know how that warranty works?
I think we will have a better presentation about that. But the maintenance for whatever they bid would be included in it.
Right, okay.
But I think that would be a separate discussion.
Right, that would be.
On the bidding of the actual lights.
But if you, if you did use another contractor, I don't know that the maintenance part would be included.
That'd be something we'd have to look at and sort out. And I know that this is, you know, we started putting them up in, what, September, October, so...
I think they're going to want to get a quicker start. We didn't engage them until very late in the process, and they're going to want to come earlier, I think.
So this is something that, that at least, if we put it on the next agenda to see where we stand with that. But again, that's just my thought. I'd like to hear from the other guy. You other guys, if y'all have any thoughts on that? Any issues with it, I guess?
I certainly have no issues with that. I think we need to give a local vendor an opportunity.
All right, well, Mr. Boone?
You need a motion to that effect?
I wouldn't need a motion to that effect, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this for the next meeting in order to ascertain more information as far as another local, or another bidders can be put on this job.
All right, I've got a motion to table until the next meeting. Do I have a second? I do not have a second. All right, do I have, do I have another motion on this agenda item?
I guess I'd just like to know how much we're talking about for the LED lights themselves. You know, how expensive is this going to be to, is it worth it? Or is it still just going to be a lot cheaper to just cut the lights out, take them down each year?
It's going to be a lot cheaper.
Lot cheaper.
Because of the labor, but I will mention that since we're not having to purchase the whole LED lights, and I just wish I knew more about this, but you know, since we have half, we're purchasing half of these, and they are going to be a little bit more expensive, but it's the labor that costs the most, not the lights.
Is that Richard Peterson or Richard Johnson's wheelhouse last year?
It's Richard Peterson. So, but the labor is the most expensive part of it, and this is actually less than what it would cost our crew to do it and overtime. So, and of course, it leaves them the time to do their jobs. But since we're only going to be purchasing half, and this all needs to be verified, then the expense would be less than it was last year when we bought LED lights for... We didn't end up using them all, but it would be, it should be less than what we paid last year, is what I'm assuming. I'm not sure. But it's, half of them are already going to be paid for, so you're only going to buy half of... They're, they are more expensive, but...
And the extension for $147.8, is that what the contract was for last year as well? Or is it, doesn't have a step up or anything like that?
That was what it was awarded at last year. And I don't know that we've used all that. I'm not sure how much we spent with them yet. I can't remember that.
All right.
The way I'm looking at 147, I mean, you could add a couple employees, right? Or am I looking at something wrong? If you added a couple employees in the whatever department that were capable of hanging Christmas tree lights, and they'd be available?
You'd have to do the whole bit over again, because this includes all of it. The putting up and taking down.
Right. But if you had three new employees that were available year-round to do other things, you could add three people, you know, with benefits for $50,000 apiece.
This, what we're hoping is that we're not going to have this expense every year. That's what we're trying to, to move... That's what we're trying to, to move towards.
All right. Well, I've got a, I don't have a motion. Do I have a motion on this at all?
I'll second Councilman Boone's motion to table it.
Okay, we've got a motion to table and a second. All in favor of tabling this motion into the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, that will be tabled until our, what is, July twenty-third? All right, next agenda item is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute extension number two of the contract with Galls LLC for the Police Department Uniforms twenty sixteen, bid number zero one nine dash sixteen, for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The approximate annual cost will be thirteen thousand dollars. And this is just a renewal? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sorry, I cannot second, that was a premature second. But I had, I heard another second, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right.
Just have it.
On a second machine. All right, number fourteen is the resolution that the City Council approves the selection of Dell Consulting LLC to perform professional engineering services for re-roofing at Fairhope City Services and Utilities Building for the Facilities Maintenance Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate the fee schedule.
Yes, sir, Mr. President and counsel, we had a couple of rain events a while back where we discovered we had some significant leakage, leakage going on in the Utilities and Public Works Building at five 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 South Section Street. We were able to get a temporary patch, but our brand-new server room got flooded in that, in that process. This is really not a re-roofing, but it is putting a roof membrane system over the existing roof. It is, does require some technical specifications to be developed to go out for bid, since it's a, it's a specialty-type service, and we're just asking for authorization, authorization to come back with a not-exceed price with Dell to put together that roof specification.
All right, counsel, I'll open this up for discussion.
I'll make a motion. Want to approve it?
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
It's approved, thank you, sir. All right, next is resolution number fifteen, that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure, has voted to procure procurement. Has voted to procure ten marine pedestals for Fairhope docks for high power with a total cost of nine thousand one hundred and four dollars, and recommends budget amendment for same. So there's a budget amendment to this, so this is not a budgeted item. Mr. Lynn, do you want to come talk about this?
This is part of the Marina Improvement Program. On Wednesday, we're meeting with Stuart Engineering, who will be doing the electrical engineering design for us down there, and we want to be prepared, and as part of our marketing, as soft as it is, show the continued improvement of the marina, and show our transients and our long-termers who come and go, and boaters talk a lot, that we are moving forward, that we are improving the marina. These particular pedestals are movable. That was a request that was put out to us. We researched, high power has a, they are a sole source, and it's a matter of protecting our assets with the conditions that we have, weather-wise, we can take the significant part of these pedestals and remove them before any damage happens with any storm coming. So what we'd like to do is to prepare ourselves, we'll get the pedestals as soon as we can put them up, once the engineering and the work has been done. We're targeting very specific areas of the marina right now, excuse me, to take care of our more expensive slips and our transient slips.
Counsel, any questions, any comments?
I'd just say I was in a meeting with Lynn when we first brought this up, and that was the one thing that was asked, is if we could get them where they could be removable in case there was a storm, so good job, I'm finding some.
If there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Number sixteen is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase a camera system for the Police Department, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one dash sixteen dash fifty-one A fifteen. The cost will be twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Robert, you always give us the budgeted versus non-budgeted.
Seven thousand under budget.
Seven thousand under budget, all right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, resolution number seventeen, that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase a two thousand nineteen Ford F-two-fifty Super Cab four-by-two pickup for the Gas Department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion?
There goes that seven thousand. Seven thousand over budget.
Seven thousand over budget? All right, well, even Steven there. All right, well, so I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. Number eighteen is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase a two thousand seventeen Ford F-four-fifty Extended Cab four-by-four pickup for the Gas Department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Purchasing Bid List, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a cost not to exceed forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion?
Thirty-five over, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred over? You know, I see these that say they did not let out for, have to be let out for bid. I mean, you know, we've got one that's seven thousand over, one that's thirty-five hundred over, would we not be better off?
You don't mean the planes of lights over?
Please, yes, sir. I just sit there thinking, there's two back-to-back that we don't have to let out for bid, maybe it'd be better if we did let it out.
The second one was a duly, three fifty was in the budget for forty. The same price after the toolbox and the diesel, that's a gas burner on the forty thousand. I can get the diesel, four-wheel drive, and the sixteen thousand GBW for three more thousand dollars, and that's, that's why we're doing that.
The truck that we're, the truck that we're actually buying is better than the one that was actually budgeted?
Yes, sir, a whole lot. The GBW on the three fifty's about ten-five, and this one's sixteen thousand.
What about, I guess we've already voted on it, but what about, what, why was seventeen?
Thank you. There again, it was put in the budget before me for two one fifties, personal one fifties useless for what we do, it won't tow anything. Two fifty has a towing package. The one fifty come in at, right at thirty thousand dollars, and this one come in at thirty-two, so you're, it was real close.
So we're still?
By the time you added the toolbox, toolbox, seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, again, we're getting a better truck.
Yes.
Not, not the same truck at a worse price.
You're right.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that, thanks, sir. All right, do I have a motion for number eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number nineteen is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to approve a three-year lease of mailing machine for the City of Fairhope, and the type of mailing machine needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total lease amount of seventeen thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. I'll open this up for discussion.
All right, so on this one, I guess my question would be, is way over budget, like ten times what projected budget was, is this something we've leased in the past? I assume we always had one, but.
It's actually a three-year contract, at least for seventeen thousand.
So it's?
Right.
So Jimmy, how much do we have budget for this?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at, you know, fifty, what, fifty-six hundred dollars yearly instead of seventeen?
I mean, fifteen hundred in the budget, fifteen thirty-two, it's actually seventeen something, so, yeah, you're looking at?
Three, three times at least.
I'm just wondering if it seems like something we would have had in the past, I'm wondering if they changed the rates on it, or?
No, actually, it's less than what we had in the past.
So it was just a weird?
It's in budget there, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm having a little trouble hearing down here. You're telling me this is, money-wise, this is less than what we've had in the past?
This is less than what was the last three years, yes.
Yeah, and because it's a three-year contract, that's why it's seventy thousand, we have a portion, a portion of it will be in this fiscal year, and then the most of it will be in next fiscal year and the year after. So those budgets will handle the rest of that seventeen thousand dollars.
I think I see.
So it's, it's just a way, it's, because it's three years, it's the way it's presented, so basically, we've got the budget this year for these last three months?
Well, whoever, it looks like when it was budgeted at fifteen thirty-two, the actual contract is based on twelve quarterly payments of fourteen twenty-four, so they're probably
We only have three months left of this fiscal year.
They're probably throwing the quarterly payment amount instead of the total amount.
So we're good?
I got it now.
All right, appreciate it, Mike, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion for number nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Resolution number twenty, that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure an IBACT seventy-six tractor and equipment for the Sewer Department, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Corp., and therefore does not have, does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the Sourcewells Bid Process, the cost will be thirty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Any discussion?
Jay?
This is, I think an email was sent to you, no, I sent it to Richard. We originally wanted one ninety-five, the budget said we could, had it up to two fifty. The original invoice came in at a hundred and ninety-five thousand, some change. We did not take acceptance of the T-six-six tractor yet, so they gave us a fourteen thousand dollar break on it, so we cut a green sheet for a hundred and eighty-one thousand. We do have the truck, we don't have the tractor. The tractor drives the camera, so technically, I'm asking for eighteen thousand more than I originally asked for, when you do the math. We needed to do not only the sewer, but it allows us to do the storm drains too, which is, would be a reduction in cost for Public Works.
So again, this is, so with the truck and the tractor together, this, it's about eighteen thousand more than was originally budgeted, I guess?
Right, right, so I had two fifty, I, I broke it down in the email, but I think I'm about still twenty-four thousand dollars under, even considering the fact that you were generous enough to give me ten thousand dollars out of that for the generator several times ago, so.
Now?
I'm still about twenty-four thousand under budget.
All right, any discussion, counsel?
So twenty-four under budget with the two items?
Right, and the ten thousand dollars that you guys gave.
Make a motion?
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Number twenty-one, resolution that the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to add the Assistant Marina General Manager job position, and the job description and grade of pay for same. This is something we talked about in our work session last, last meeting. Counsel, any discussion? If there is no discussion, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Number twenty-two is resolution that the City gratefully accepts the quitclaim deed from LBB Holdings LLC to the City of Fairhope, Alabama, dedicating a right-of-way on Horn Lane to correct an encroachment, and authorizes the mayor to sign any documents necessary to complete the transfer. This is something Richard explained to us in the work session. Counsel, any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Number twenty-three, application for a restaurant liquor license by Casey Carrigan for TexBama Group LLC, doing business as Texar Bama Barbecue, located at two twelve one-half Fairhope Avenue, Fairhope, Alabama. It's all in order?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, everything is in order, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. The next was one we walked on to the agenda, number twenty-four, and that is a resolution that the, the Fairhope City Council hereby authorizes, authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a purchase price for the Riviera property, two hundred by two hundred property on the northwest corner of Young and Nichols, and bring back to the City Council for approval. Any discussion on this?
Just reiterate that we don't like to typically walk things on the agenda, but this does come back to the council, so if anyone had any concerns in the community, they would have another opportunity to speak to this, but I've been out and looked at the available lots out there, and I think this is the appropriate one to purchase, so I'll make a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is public, just, public participation for anything. And so if you'd like to come up and talk about anything in particular, you've got three minutes. All right. With nobody here for public participation, I will close public participation and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.